Hereby call this meeting of the Wyreka City Council to order. All please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so the city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Are there any public comments tonight? Come on up. Mark, podium right there and there's a microphone right at the podium.
That's the microphone there.
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
My name is Mark Atwood. I live in Wyreka. Have the next Wednesday sixty-five years. I grew up here, had a wonderful life, and it really upsets me what I see with going on with our homeless. I know we got a terrible problem and it's just gonna get worse. And I kinda did a little study on my own, didn't I? I don't belong in a club or associated with anybody on this. And I did a survey and I don't know, Dwayne?
Yes, I got here. Here's some copies of what the survey looks like.
And so today I went home and I just grabbed a pile of what I've had come in and I ran through thirty-eight of them.
I don't want one.
And on the first question,
Oh, you want one?
It says, "Are you afraid or uneasy to use our greenways?"
Start all over again.
I'm sorry, Mark, I interrupted you.
Oh, okay. I grabbed a bunch of these today. I got a bunch more at home to go through. I did thirty-eight of them. And like on the first, the first question, "Are you afraid or uneasy to use our greenways?" Out of thirty-eight people, thirty said yes, eight said no. And then the second one is, "How do you feel about people living in our parks and down in the creek and stuff like that?" Out of thirty-eight, twenty-seven of them didn't like it. Eight of them, it bothered them a little. Two of them, it did not. And then on number three, "How do you feel about the garbage in our creeks, greenways?" So on and so forth. Thirty-five didn't like it. Two didn't bother. And then this one that kinda surprised me is on the handing of the food, health food, tents, shelter. Sixteen of them liked it, twenty-one of them didn't. So it's getting like fifty-fifty on, you know, people feel we need to do something to help them out. But I can see by driving around and looking and walking the whole creek, our greenways aren't being used. And all the money we've spent on those is, it's a shame. People are scared to go down in there, you know? They're trash, you know? It's just terrible. Like behind Walmart and all that area, you know, that's environmental tragedy back there. I mean, here we've got a steelhead creek that runs through our town, which we're really fortunate to have that. But with what's going on out there, we're never gonna get that back, you know? And I believe that that shopping center, to stop, you know, it's stopping access to these places that are gonna clean it up. We can go in there and clean it up once a year for the next thirty years. If we don't do something to stop it, we'll never get a handle on it, you know? That shopping center should be forced to build a fence around their property to keep people from being able to go back and forth through there. Some of our businesses put their waste material outside. If they can get into it, they're gonna dig into it and they're gonna pack stuff off. You know, there's a, you know, there's no easy answer to what we're gonna do here or how we're gonna deal with them. But we need to make some kind of game plan, you know, and try to get it going. Because if we don't, we're just gonna get overrun by it, you know?
I didn't see that. I don't know if you saw today, but there was a crew out behind between Rayleigh's and Walmart.
Yeah.
And they trimmed all those bushes out there and they were burning.
Yeah, well, that's good. They needed to open it up.
Let's get a little open.
And then another thing that needs to happen is agencies need to get together. You know, the fishing game should be stepping in there. I've been told from trying to get trash out of the mountains, we can't touch it until it's in our creeks. Well, it's in our creeks and they don't wanna talk to me about it, you know? So, I mean, we gotta get a lot of organizations together to figure out what, how we're gonna handle this problem or it's just gonna overrun our city. You know, I look at our poor downtown. Y'all have the buildings are empty. It's sad, you know? This town's just gonna be a wash. So, that's kinda all I have to say.
I just wanna thank you for, you know, putting the initiative out there and talking to people and just finding out their opinions on this, you know? I wish more people would take the initiative just to, what I call beating a brush and getting out there and talking to people, you know? We, as a city council, we always get the blunt of everything and we hear about it, especially, you know, Debbie and I, we walked the park. She especially walked the park a number of times and we were used as a target a lot of times 'cause people come up and complain and what's going on and whatnot. You know, like I, especially earlier, there's a, there's one positive thing is we do have a park host there now. So that's, that's gonna, that will help. Yeah, two of them, yeah.
Yeah.
And so we do have that lined out. So that's, that's gonna be a real positive help there as far as that goes.
But it's just, you know, and I target mostly women on this.
Yeah.
Because most guys aren't scared to walk up there, you know? And it's a shame when our women are scared to go use a resource like Green Horn. I mean, that's the only really nice thing we've got going in town anymore.
Like you were talking to someone, you said that they were, they don't wanna walk alone anymore, that they have to walk to somebody else.
I saw bear maces. I saw concealed weapons. You know, how sad is it to go walk Green Horn Park and won't go do it unless you pack a concealed weapon or you got mace in your pocket? You know, we got a problem, you know? So, I hope I can hear back from you and we can try to get some groups together to start to figure out what we're gonna do, how we're gonna approach this problem. Cause you did a study last year, you're doing one this year, and then you're not gonna do one till two thousand twenty-one. It went up forty-two percent last year.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, we do the point in time.
Oh, no, twenty twenty-one. No, it is twenty twenty-one. We're gonna miss this next year.
Yeah. So we went up forty-two percent in a year.
Yep.
About ten years of that book that you're looking at.
It's a problem. I just got back from a League of California Cities meeting and we're not the only ones with the problem.
Yeah.
We're working on it. We've got the Ciscu homelessness coalition and we're working with other agencies.
Right, right.
And trying to get some funding so that we can fight it.
Yeah.
Can Mark participate with the homelessness?
Oh, of course. I'd love him to be there. In fact, I can let you know the next meeting if you'd wanna come.
Yeah, I would.
When is the next meeting?
Um, eighteenth? I think it's the eighteenth. I'll look it up for you and I'll get it to you.
Yes, it's the eighteenth, the homelessness coalition. Did the, is Great Northern? Is that a Great Northern?
I don't know. I didn't read that part, so. I'll get to the detail.
It's in wait this next year.
Oh, wow, okay.
I thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you for your energy. Okay, oh, and by the way, I'm so sorry to hear about your dad. He was my dentist and he was a wonderful man.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, he made it a long ways.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion possible action. Item number one, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from March twenty-second through April fourth, two thousand nineteen. B, approval of minutes of the meeting of March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. And C, acceptance of treasures report and budget to actual for the month of February, two thousand nineteen. Do you have a motion or?
I'll make a motion that we approve that A, B, and C as it stands, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
I agree.
Go ahead. The light is all over me and I'm having a tough time reading.
I saw that.
Oh, they're there now.
I'll try to catch it.
You guys to move yet?
It's okay.
Just, you're taller. Can you adjust that one?
There's one right over you.
Well, this one there is, just get it.
We can wish to get.
I can, I can tonight.
He can move over right into Paul's place. It's dark too though.
It's dark too.
Yeah, that's the.
That's fine for tonight, but just get it fixed.
Yeah, that one will adjust. I'm not tall enough to reach it. I'm too sawed off.
Also, the fire chief wouldn't mind making a public comment.
The fire chief wouldn't mind making a public comment?
Oh, the fire chief, would you like to make a public comment?
I would.
Let's go over towards her.
Come on down.
A little bit further.
Can you go to the right more?
Move.
No, it just swivels.
All up and back.
I can read it more on this side, but not on this side.
Well, then let me.
The right side's not important.
Okay, Chief Jerry.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to give you a couple of things here. Some not so good news, some really good news, but it's all, it's all for the benefit of what we're trying to accomplish here. As we talked during the presentation of the operational study that was done, the non-essential, non-emergency medical aids that were going on. The numbers are in for March, highest ever, hundred and eighty-nine calls total. Only seventeen of those were non-medical. So, you know, a hundred and seventy-one roughly was medical aids. You know, they run the gamut from some frequent flyers that, you know, seem to have everything wrong under the sun. But, and understandably, people do have medical issues, but a good portion of those could be, could be dealt with in such a way that, you know, ambulance could just request us if needed. So, I know, and I thank you for, you know, Steve going out and talking to Chief Anzo.
We did.
You got some of the same answers I think we've obtained before.
Steve and I went last week over and met with Chief Anzo. And we let him know, you know, that we have firefighters approaching, running out, and that we wanted to know if there was any way that they could change, you know, how the calls come in. And he pretty much said that with the system that they have now, that he didn't believe that they could. But there's a new system out and if we would help them buy it, it would help. Isn't that pretty much what he said?
Yes, I took it as he didn't say no.
He didn't say no.
Right. Can't long be pony after. I understand.
No, I mean, it's, there's a process there.
Sure. No, I understand. But I'm just letting you know because I just wanted it to go on record that we're informing you guys as we go forward and trying to, trying to make improvements, so.
Hundred and eighty-nine calls in a month.
In a month.
Wow.
Yeah, we're at four hundred and eighty-six right now for January, February, March, and part of April, so.
Wow.
And the only concern there is we're gonna lose a few people back to rehire for CAL FIRE. Some of the ones that have been running those calls. So, you know, it's gonna be more of a burden for the working guy, you know, that's full-time and trying to respond.
Here's a question for you. Getting back to the homeless thing.
Right.
How would you think of our homeless situation?
You know, for a good period of time, I tried to have the firefighters write on the call log with an H to indicate homeless. I haven't seen those in a while. I know the, we had one young lady there that was, she was calling from the Grange.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. There's quite a few up at the Grange where it's sheltered.
But not, not like we have. No, we're near like what we have. Not that I've been here any way.
Is there any way, I mean, I know it's more of a burden for you guys. Is there any way you could possibly start getting those numbers for us by any chance?
For, just for the homeless?
Yeah.
Sure?
Cause I'd really like to see that.
We have to pay more close attention to, you know, them and also with, you know, CAL FIRE. When they respond on, they respond to the Grange, you see, that's on that side of this automatically. So, we could notify them too. Hey, if you guys see that, you know, make a note of it. And it's better for we keep track of it.
Yeah, it'd be nice for our, you know, for our whole situation going on.
No, I agree. Yeah, and I was doing that for a while and it seemed, honestly, from what I've seen, which I hadn't been responding as much because we have other folks picking up the slack, but it really tapered off a bunch.
Okay.
As they were kinda getting moved here and there and everywhere. And I don't know, maybe they're taking better care of themselves. A lot of it was they were wanting to go to the hospital, you know, just to get out of the cold.
Yeah.
Understandable.
That's true of the shelter, I guess.
The shelter is closed now as of April first.
It is, okay.
Because of the temperatures being not as cold.
Yeah, okay.
So.
But I mean, the efforts that have been made, and I applaud you guys and folks that have been doing the right thing, it has helped us. And where we've made strides is like on Butcher Hill, telling owners, "Look, when it comes summertime, you're gonna be paying for some suppression costs for fires. I'm just telling you right now. We're gonna push that."
Yeah.
So, and it, within a week, they were gone. So that really helped, yeah. That was just one that Chief Demas and Lieutenant Betts and I worked on, just independently of each other. We didn't even know we were all talking the same.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it just, it worked out really well.
Yeah.
That was one positive note.
Good.
The other thing I have for you is Tim Shaw and I and Will Girdner took a trip to Florida to do a final inspection on the engine that y'all voted yes on. So I've got some photos. If you just wanna pass the iPad around real quick, I'll just show you what your, where it's at. And it's on the way now. It's being driven back from, from Florida. It should be in Sacramento by next week sometime. So, we should be here sometime in April for you guys to, you know, bring it to council meeting.
Good, that'd be great.
Yeah.
This is an ooh-ah moment.
It is, it is. It's.
That's very nice.
I can.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a fireman.
Yeah.
Wow, that is, that is nice. That is real nice.
Like I said, it wasn't all bad news.
I think that the, did the unit make it over to Grenada?
It did, as far as I know. Now, that was a few days ago that I talked to Allen Saway. So they were gonna pick it up, I think, Tuesday.
I believe that.
In Sacramento?
Tuesday.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Great, well, thank you, Chief. We appreciate all, all that you do.
Thank you.
Wait, we did gloss over something.
What?
His subtle, very subdued suggestion of maybe the ambulance service could call if they needed assistance. So would we get in legal jeopardy if we declined to respond to the call until the ambulance was on site?
Do you really wanna ask a legal question?
Oh, probably not here, but that did come up with Chief Anzo.
Yeah, we have done that in other cases where, you know, it's usually a toss-up whether or not the person needs medical help. And that's why I mentioned during the presentation of the study that that's one of the things that I haven't sat down with the ambulance service and maybe that's something I could do. But I would rather have it be from, you know, a body such as the council. But, you know, time being what it is, I think that would be helpful to talk with their operational leaders and say, "Look, you know, how about if medical aides that are, that don't come over as, you know, CPR in progress, difficulty breathing, ones that are obviously not life-threatening from the initial call, call us if you need us."
Right.
And I don't know, I just don't have the answers because it runs that, it runs the possibility of people saying, "Well, we pay you the money for the, you know, for the new engine and you guys don't respond." You know, we don't wanna have that, as John, you know, the consultant was telling us, that's not a good thing. But we could reduce some of these. They really, they truly aren't necessary. And the way you do it is by Schedule A, Schedule B, you know, you do it.
That's what they showed us, yeah.
Under a certain type of protocol. So, that's where I think we can make the progress. But, you know, it has to happen and it's costly, you found out.
Council members.
Well, I think the council's gotta do something on this 'cause we're gonna lose firefighters once you're getting burned out.
Right.
And it's just unbelievable, the amount of calls. So, I mean, whether we have to help go in with CAL FIRE on a new response system, that may be very important to do something like that. But we've gotta make a dent in this 'cause it can't go in the direction it's going 'cause it's gonna be a major crisis.
Even, even if, you know, in a perfect world, we go out and hire a paid chief tomorrow, that's only one person you need. You gotta have the horses. If you had a paid staff that could handle calls, at least during the day, and maybe augment that with paid per call with volunteers after that or a certain period of the week, that's another option. But it's, to me, it's like, what's the point if people, educating the public would be great, but it's really hard to do.
Yeah.
And maybe there's a way to do that. I don't know. You know, so think outside the box types.
Oh, I'm sorry, John Murray.
Yes, sir. I'm wondering, is part of this, would it help to have, part of this have a behavioral health step in? Cause you know, my old neighbor, I mean, how many times did we have?
Right, right.
And, you know, and that's what we had to do. We had to get them involved and get help. That's the only way to make it.
When it gets to that point, that's when either myself or my officer step in and we do make those calls. We have done it other than, and you would know this because we don't share it for obvious reasons. But there have been other cases where we call Adult Protective and we call other people to assist and say, "Hey, we're coming here a lot. This gentleman can't help his wife. Another one is there now." So, so we did, we have done that. It's, it's hard to pin down exactly what the reason is. It's just, I think part of it is drug abuse, part of it is an elderly society and anything under the sun, you name it. People have the slightest acre pain, they call. And it's surprising because there's a bill to be paid to the ambulance by somebody. So, anyhow, I'm rambling on.
But, but thank you for bringing those numbers to them. They are alarming.
Yeah, well, I just wanna make sure you guys were aware. I know Lauren was in front of dinner date with those numbers too by Mike, so.
Hundred and eighty-nine in a month.
That's annoying.
What's the average per day?
That's six per day.
That's an average of like six a day. There was one stretch there and I'm trying to think exactly, exactly how it was put to me. But one of my firefighters at the station stays there and does reports. And I think he said in four days, there were something like thirty-eight or forty calls. So, it, it runs, it runs the, to the point of being ridiculous. But, you know, it's, it's so hard to, when you already have a job, running around trying to figure out how you're gonna cover it, then go, "Well, why, why did they call?" So.
And that's another thing. Dwayne was talking about keeping track of the homeless calls. Could, could you also keep track of the critical ones?
Sure.
In other words, you know, how are the critical ones?
What I wanna do, Madam Mayor, is look, is try to, try to come up with a system where on the, on the run report, there on the call log, there's something there where they can say, you know, there's a code and says, you know, whether or not you really feel like fire is needed. Cause a lot of times, you know, on a CPR call, you need, you need a lot of people 'cause you have a lot of things happening. For difficulty breathing, maybe not. Sometimes those go into a distress call. Other ones, the majority of them don't need fire response, as you were all probably familiar by now studying the report. So, if those things can be documented, at least it gives us some ideas of how many of those we could maybe eliminate.
So, you'll keep some data, and we can talk about it too, 'cause I know we're trying to help out with some of the administrative.
Yes, yeah. I'll see, I'll see. I'm gonna bring that up at the meeting Monday and try to see for a period of time if we can do that. And, you know, in the meantime, keep moving towards trying to get E and D or, there's other, another term I believe is here or they lose me right now, but Pro QA. So, anyway, yes, Brett?
I was just gonna say, Mike shared those statistics and
Right.
The fifth highest volumes ever have occurred since July of two thousand eighteen for that department.
So, in less than a year?
In less than a year. They're hitting every month, new records.
And what concerns me is, I mean, you think about it, if you had a hundred and eighty-nine calls in a month, say it was in the middle of the summer, and say you had forty of those were fires, you, we would be like, running, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we'd be calling for a different kinda help, you know what I mean? It's, but it's, this type of thing is you can, you can do it and the guys are managing, the crews are managing, guys ain't got it. But, you know, we're gonna lose some of those to attrition and, you know.
Well, they just get burned out.
You know, we've, we've been telling you, so. Anything else?
Well, thank you for bringing us up to date. We appreciate it and, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lauren.
How's it coming on recruiting some new people?
Should have one here and one after that, probably a couple of months. But should have one at the end of the, the next, when's the next meeting after this?
Eighteenth and then May second.
So, yeah, in a couple of weeks we'll have one.
They're writing.
Yeah, and we're, we're losing a few others that have been in for a while, so we have to keep recruiting. So, it's going good. There's always interest. It's just a matter of now they're, people are pretty well set where they're gonna be for the summer, so.
So, what's your total number now?
I believe it's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Not bad, yeah. But we're gonna, we're gonna be down a little bit and, you know, it ebbs and flows if you want.
Yeah, but you're up to nineteen, so that's.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're fine. We're gonna be okay.
Bye, Derek.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here for the report. Okay, item number two.
One more thing on that. So are you and Steve gonna go?
Back?
Can we discuss an expense and cost?
Can we put it on the next agenda?
Sure.
Can we put it on the next agenda as to where our next steps would be?
Next steps would be on the next agenda.
Next steps for talking to firefighters.
Yeah, definitely to keep moving forward.
Right.
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number two, discussion possible action. Adopt resolution approving requests associated with a special event known as the Humbug Hurry Up to be held on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Where's all our Humbug Hurry Uppers?
Yeah.
Officer, you're not in that one, okay.
I'm not here for that tonight.
Jill's teaching a class.
Yeah, Jill is teaching a class and Bill is the president now and I saw something going on at school. Maybe he couldn't be here.
So.
Maybe you.
At this point, what, what I would say is that this is an event that we've had traditionally here for a number of years.
Oh, lots of years.
And we are recommending approving it yet again. And typically, we put these on general business, so if the people that are sponsoring wanna come up and talk, since that's not available, our recommendation would be approved.
All the people that are here, wanna talk about bicycles? Okay, do I have a motion?
Something I had noticed about that is the tape that they use to mark the routes sometimes don't get taken down afterwards.
That's a good point.
It's true.
And it's trash left up.
Okay, so they, they have a spray that they use too, but we'll, we'll ask them about that.
Well, they have a five-hundred-dollar refundable deposit for cleanup, so the city needs to make sure they've cleaned it up.
And that means up at the top too.
Yeah.
The maintenance and operations manager.
Oh, you did?
The maintenance and operations manager is typically the one that performs the after race inspection. Ben Miller, the maintenance and operations manager.
He gets, he gets.
So he goes, he goes out and checks it out. The J M B A, since they've taken over the Humbug, have done a really stellar job on their cleanup. I know there are many, many races that happen out there and we find errant flagging and such.
Yeah.
But yeah, I've left myself a note to make sure we double check that this year too.
All the agents of my walk-in route.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it. I've done it in the past, so many years ago, but I'm getting a little old for it now. But I do, did enjoy it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and when Rotary did it, I know you were really involved. Okay, there's a motion to approve the special event known as the Humbug Hurry Up to be held on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number three, discussion possible action. Adopt resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, funded by SBI, Small Business Service SBI.
SB one. SB one.
SB one, which was the transportation entity, the Road Area Accountability Act. That must be Matt.
This is. This is Madam Mayor, members of council again. This is the RMRA funding that we've been receiving annually through SB one. Last year, we, as you may remember, we coupled it with some local funds, Measure C, and went out and chip sealed the seventh almost of the city. And that's our plan again this season. So this will be headed towards that, that type of local roads funding again.
Right. Oh, sorry.
So, you're gonna also combine with Measure C funds. So this is only what, fifty percent approximately of the funding?
Probably even under that, right? Last year, I don't have the exact number on what, off the top of my head, what we did with chip seal, but it was sizable. It was more than fifty percent of that, for sure.
So we're gonna try to do about the same amount as we did last year?
We have, again, the maintenance and operations manager, Ben Miller, and I have worked with our Street Saver program that, it's a computerized program that inventories and tracks what we do and, and reports out to us on the pavement condition index, which I spoke to you before. The PCI that I'm always talking about, our grade between zero and a hundred. So, yeah, we have that mapped through our asset management and our GIS mapping and it's ready to go. So we're in talks right now with the county and there, I made me, coming back to you, this year, it may be a little different. If you recall, the last few years, nobody had money for roads and everything was falling apart. And then SB one held. And you've seen Caltrans performing all the work they're doing out there and you're starting to see the county ramping up and doing work. You know, last year, the county did very, very little. They were just doing spot repairs predominantly. So we had them available to us for every dime we had available. This year may be a little bit different. Their scheduling is heavy this year. So we're going to do our very best to sneak in with their crews because we get a better bang for the buck on the oil and the chip costs and the laying by utilizing the county, 'cause two agencies.
Their crews did a really good job too.
Right, they do. They've, they've done our chip sealing for a number of years, a long, long time, long before I was here. And we get more bang for our buck because the agencies can work together in that manner. This year, we may have some side projects that we have to put out for RFP, request for proposals, and have some, maybe get some local road repair guys out there, contractor-type guys doing some of this. It all, it's all gonna hinge on, on what the county's. It all, it's all gonna hinge on, on what the county's scheduling is like, so, yeah, we're gonna do about, like, we've broken it into seven chunks, that's our plan right now. And so, we did the first chunk, finished up the first chunk last year, so we should be getting on that, get into that role, and at least we can get held where we are. Um, five to ten years out of a chip seal, so it falls in on that seven year. It's not a perfect answer, but it's a really strong, strong bandaid.
It helps.
Any more big projects going on that we can look forward to? Like Oregon Street type thing, other than the Oregon Street maybe?
Well, yeah, we've got the, the little, the little one coming through the R S T P, um, that's gonna do that little, the tie for the bike lanes from Oregon Street up into the park.
Yeah.
Right, that was proved.
That, that'll happen, right. Hope to get that one on the ground by the time the snow's flying, it's a pretty small project, it's just gonna be a flashbang in and out. More admin stuff and actually time on the ground on that one, and then obviously the uh, the Highway Three rebuild, you're gonna be hearing a lot from me about that one, but.
Besides, we have on uh, there, let's say like towards Stenham area, we have the somewhat of, I don't know what we wanna call the signs on each end of, of that. From Oregon Street, or excuse me, from the bowling alley to uh, Greenhorn, we have a little barricades of some sort with the placards and it doesn't say anything.
Right.
Uh, what's that indicating, I guess?
They say rough road on the other side of the sign, I think they flipped around. Um, I asked Ben to do that because the maintenance division has been chasing the potholes out there.
Yeah.
Um, and Steve and I have actually talked about this for a long, a long time, that that section of roadway.
It's getting bad.
Due to the, the base, it's a base failure issue, which took the top layer off with it, so we call it alligator, and we've just been waiting for the potholes, since once, once you have one that flips out.
It's alligator-y.
It just blows, and it's been alligatored.
Especially this year with the snow and had to plow it and stuff, it just.
Yeah, it was, it took a beating, we had a real winter for the first time in a long time, so we had plows out there and, and you know, just the traffic, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, that's what that's about, and that, that one's coming up in a, in a year or two, we're dropping Marty into the preliminary on that one.
So, just patch it, patch it this year though to as best you can.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing one of these on South Oregon for ten years now, just waiting for funding to come up.
So, that's been a ba- a base failure, I've seen that one falling apart, geez, ten years ago.
Yep, right, yeah, and there's no easy fix for that, you can't chip seal that to save it, it just goes, it's four eight ways the same way.
No, no. If I put on over to the bridge, past Greenhorn is the same way, cause that, well, that's a drainage problem there, going towards the bridge.
That particular block is a thorn in my side, I, we have, uh, we have groundwater piezo-meters installed in wells, in shallow wells that we installed last year.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Um, and have a geotechnical firm, which you approved immediately, do, um, not to exceed thirty thousand, I think, on that, that study. And so, the results of that, we're, we're telling, um, that entire end of town is built on a mill pond.
Yep.
And the mill pond's still there.
Back in the fifties.
Mill pond's still there and it's still full of water, it's just buried, so, yeah, so we're, yeah, that's gonna be the next one.
I, I can't say I remember the mill pond, but I remember Dad talking about the mill pond being there and.
Yeah, that was all, actually, historically, a portion of the original Sharps Mill, which is over by the casino.
Yep. Yep, all back through there.
And it was all that whole area was a big.
And we had Lucas, Lucas logging and all that back there.
Yes, that's true.
Yep, so, but yeah, the R M R A is a good thing, we're excited to get it on the ground.
Okay. Debbie has something to say.
I have a couple of questions actually, so, um, the streets that are gonna be paved, is that gonna be available for public viewing online?
It will be, um, it's not ready for primetime, so to speak, right now.
I'm good with that.
Um, one drawback to that is that while we need to list out the areas, and we even do this with the state for funding and things like that, to where they ask for a specific list. It's difficult on a P R end of things, just to, to put that list out too prematurely and say, we're gonna do Chester. And then everyone that lives on Chester gets excited and then we don't do it.
No.
So, it's more of a P R issue if, if things happen, but we have the proposed map created right now.
What I was trying to do.
So, we're gonna tighten that down, work with the scheduling, the county, figure out exactly if we can get that all done, and then we'll release that publicly.
Right, so I can refer to that when people ask me, because.
Yes, you can.
I don't even know about the rest of the council, but I was asked quite often, where are they going next, where are they at, why aren't they here, blah, blah, blah.
Right, and I like to get that, I like to get that out as early as possible also as director, because the, the public relations portion of that, when people know it's coming.
So, I'm gonna pass that buck.
Months in advance, it's, it's easier for us to shut the streets down, it's easier to get the, the cars off the street, get in, get it cleared so the guys can get in, get their prep work done.
Yeah.
Cause it's not just come in on so, on Tuesday and chip seal it, there's weeks and weeks and weeks of prep work that our internal guys, our maintenance division goes out and does, they blow the cracks out with, with air and they. Wash the gutters down and get it prepped, it's, it's a paint job.
Gotcha.
Right, so it's all in the prep, so.
Really is, it's labor. Okay, and the other thing on the bottom here, it says, uh, construction expected to be done between July twenty nineteen and June twenty twenty. Um, would you put this stuff, not for me necessarily, but if it's available for, um, the community to read up on, you might wanna add the words as weather permits, so that you're not tied down to that? And that's all?
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, that last paragraph?
The last one, yeah. Yeah, 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 right next to it.
Those weather permits, do you think it's gonna rain all summer?
No, but I think it's gonna snow in the winter, and it doesn't exclude the winter season, so.
I hope so.
Well, that's true, that's true, good point.
Heck, I've seen it snow in July, so.
Wow, I've seen it snow on my birthday, but that's me. Okay, anything else? Uh, do we need a motion on this recommended action? Okay, we've got a resolution to look at, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion or adopt a resolution about adopting a list of projects for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty funded by S B one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the resolution adopting a list of projects funded by S B one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Boy, we're just, we're just wasn't along tonight here and, okay, and I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that there will not be. A closed session item, I apologize, Liz, so, you know, stick around, I know, I know you're sad.
No closed session?
Okay, uh, let's see, item number four is discussion possible action, relinquish ownership of certain Pacific Power meters and accounts. On Minor Street previously installed as a part of the lighting of Minor Street project of twenty twelve.
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, again, this uh, was, I believe I spoke to you at a previous meeting, this was brought up by the new owners of the. Building at three thirty-one and three thirty-three, I believe it is, Minor Street on the corner of Minor and Oregon Street, they just moved in with Larry Blazer, his wife. Um, and.
Which building, the one that, that used to be owned by?
The brick on the corner with the Coca-Cola sign on it?
Oh, Coca-Cola.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so the new owners of that building came to me, um, early on when they were looking at the building and. And asked what the meter was about, and they had done their little research through the A P files in the, on the parcel. And it turns out that the meter that they were questioning was installed, and there's some history here, um, installed back in the lighting, the downtown project that the chamber put forward. Uh, two thousand twelve.
That was two thousand four, Matt?
Two thousand four.
Two thousand four, okay.
That was the first time.
The first time.
The first time, it also was in twenty ten or twenty eleven.
But then. In, in twenty ten, and then around twenty twelve is when they, they, it got some traction and started moving, and so, there were, there were two that I'm aware of, I still have. Um, the maintenance division looking into the map, the original map of where the meters were needed, because they were never really utilized, the maintenance division wasn't ever really aware of them. So, when Mr. Blazer asked, um, if the city would be willing to relinquish that back to the building owner. That's your, your call, because it was a chamber issue and the city had backed it as that project. If you remember the history of that, it, there were, there were some owners that were on board with it, there were some owners that weren't. There were issues with the physical attachment methods of the L E D lighting at the time to the unreinforced brick masonry buildings, um, so that kinda shied some owners away. And there wasn't really to my, I, I wasn't really around for that project, I was on the periphery of it down in the maintenance division, but um, there, there rather wasn't a whole full linear buy-in at the time. So, the reason I bring it to you as an agenda item is because we, the city, owns and pays the base rates on these meters now that were installed.
Oh, we did?
By John Mercier, right, and there, there's no usage, I checked them both, the two that I'm aware of, there's been no usage on them. But that's because we never plugged the lights into them.
Right.
Um, so.
That was, the purpose, as I recall, was to light up Minor Street for holidays.
Correct, correct, and it was, you know, eight, almost eighteen hundred feet of commercial grade L E D rope, they were gonna line both sides down, and they had it strategically planned out, so they had the powers, the lengths that they could run and.
It would still be nice if everybody got into it though.
Yeah, it would be nice, yeah.
Well, that was all too, the, because the L E D lighting, all that, we actually had, which, uh, what was the funding that we had, it was the, the.
Word funding?
No, 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 one of the other.
Minor Street part, Minor Street revital thing.
Oh, the Minor Street.
Minor Street grant program, right.
Yeah, we had some funding that was, the city okayed to do that, and it was never, that was never utilized, obviously.
Right, no, it was never utilized, um, Mercier Electric, I believe donated his time, and I'm not sure where they found the meters and that, but they, you know, they got installed, two of them, and then it never gained any more traction after that.
He was gonna donate, yeah, yeah. Right.
It comes down to this particular owner asked how he could take over that power account, and I said, well, I need to take that to my council.
Oh, so he wants to utilize it, oh, I got you.
Right, so we, the city would relinquish ownership of that meter and that account, and they would take it over because he, he could use some extra power for his building.
I got you.
He could light up his building.
Maybe he'll light up his building, I'm not sure, but it is on his building, there was an agreement with the prior owner in place to install that there, which I guess, yeah. That's prior ownership stuff.
I guess my only thing is, you know, being involved in that whole process to begin with, and then last year, we had Wendy from, um, Wendy's, what it was called, the.
Oh, the Pennington store.
Pennington, yeah, what's it called?
I don't, Wendy's Boaty.
Wendy's Boaty. Wendy's Boaty.
Wendy's Boaty, yeah.
Which isn't there anymore.
She, yeah, she was, you know, she brought that to our attention about the whole lighting it up, again, I, I mean, I, I, at this stage, I, I don't, I mean, I mean, I don't care either, I mean, I care either way, but. I would love to see Minor Street lit up, don't get me wrong, cause we're the ones that pushed for that big time to hap- to happen, um, I guess. My only thing is I would like to hear back from the merchants on Minor Street who's left and just, I don't know, is there any way that we could to, you know, ask them or send something out and. Say, is there, is this a possibility, or do we need to, that would be the, my last thing, if they don't wanna respond or they don't wanna, then I'd say, yeah, let's, let's.
And it, and it, what I was gonna, um, address was, the council at the time, um, was addressed by the chamber director at the time.
I wanna do that, Wes.
Uh, yeah, and, and it, you know, it was going, the entire project was a chamber project, the city completely backed, completely out because of liability issues. So, really, to me, this is, if we were to go to anyone to ask that, I think it would be.
And I, and I agree, maybe that would be the proper thing to do, is to ask the chamber, we could've asked them last night, I guess we didn't think about that, you know, um, just to see if they wanna get involved in it, if it's some, if even a possibility.
So, um, uh, first of all, we could do that, but I don't, I don't have any problem with it, really what I'm looking for is a little bit of guidance from you as to how much effort we put into.
I guess that's the hard part, is how much effort do we put in it?
Well, that, that has, has, has failed at least twice now.
Right.
And not for lack of willingness, I, I think that it's, there were, there were people committed both times to making it happen. Uh, there are just, it's a lot of logistical errors in there, or, not errors, a lot of logistical problems, they could be errors, I don't know. And, and then there was some people that, there were some people that weren't support, but I don't think that was the problem, I think the problem is it's very hard technically to do. So, we could make the ask and see if they're interested, but if they are interested, the, the downtown merchants, um, then what?
Right, right, I, I, I get that, I don't know.
I guess what I'm looking at is that we have all these priorities.
Right.
And should this be something where we, we ask the chambers, see if they're interested, see if the, and then if people are, and it emerges, great, then.
I, I guess that's something I'd refer to the rest of the council, plus because, honestly, I'm, I'm passionate enough about, I'd like to see it, so, maybe I need to step aside on this one and say, you know, let.
You know.
I don't know, this is a tough one, because.
We have a fairly new chamber, we have a new chamber executive, we have new chamber members, I was thinking, the chief, um, in his office had a, in, in the old Carnegie building, had a beautiful picture. Of Minor Street all lit up, have you seen that one, the whole street lit up, it was beautiful, so, is that, do you know if that picture is in the new police department, not to put you on the spot?
Yeah, it used to be lit up at one point in time.
I, I have to look at the chief's office now.
It was in the old chief's office, so I'm not sure if they gave it to him to take home.
I remember seeing the picture, it was a nice picture.
It was a great picture, well, anyway, I was thinking, if you guys still had it, maybe we could borrow it and show it to the chamber and see.
It used to look like.
This is what it used to look like, is there any interest, you know, in following up on it, on the pond?
Well, the problem I have, I think if you submit it to the chamber, they might say it's okay, but then they'll want the city to pay for it. They already have, that's the thing, I, I don't see any problem with letting this business owner take over the meter, we're paying for base rate on a meter for years, but. Seven years now, it's ridiculous, I think we should just turn it over, if there's support in the future for doing something, I'm sure the business owner would probably s- go along with it. But I mean, it doesn't make sense to keep paying on something right now.
Yeah, it's a good point, though, it is a good point.
And personally, I think the business, that I, I interrupted you.
Go ahead.
I actually think that the business owner could do it themselves if they wanted to, so we're not stopping them from doing it, we're just not paying for it. And we have so many higher priorities that I'd really like to put our energy into resolving some of the other issues, so.
That's true. That's a good point.
Yeah.
So, having heard that, uh, do, is there a motion or?
Well, I'll make a motion, we relinquish ownership of certain Pacific Power meters and accounts on Minor Street previously installed as part of the lighting of Minor Street project of two thousand twelve.
All second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve, um, the request, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries.
I'll just check with her, that, that, you got it, okay.
Pardon?
Oh, sometimes when there's motions where, where it's not a resolution, I'd like to check to make sure that.
We, okay.
Well, that is, it's crystal clear.
Perfectly clear.
What the, what the action was.
There's no.
The direction said the city manager needs to go and check with him.
That's another reason why I wanna make sure.
On top of the. Yeah, really.
Go ahead, walk down the street and check every business.
Yeah, that's really, okay, we're, uh, now on to city manager and staff reports, city manager.
So, I'll start this off, uh, just wanna mention the League of Local Agencies, uh, meeting is next Wednesday in Montague, so.
It is, it is.
I'm, I'm assuming that if you haven't signed up.
They already all have.
Everybody has?
Excellent.
I hope they have room for everyone.
There you go.
Is it at the community center, is it at the Dutchman Restaurant?
No.
It's at the Dutchman, right.
Dutchman.
Dutchman Restaurant, okay.
Yeah, I asked, I talked to the mayor of Montague, and she assures me there's enough room at the Dutchman. So, we're going to the Dutchman.
We're gonna be flying over there, anyway.
The Dutchman did the meal the last time anyway, but they did it at the community hall.
Was that at five thirty or six?
Five thirty, I think.
Cocktails, five thirty.
And food closer to six thirty.
Yeah, probably.
So, it depends on your priority.
Right.
Um, the, um, I went to a, our score meeting, our insurance pool, and we've actually been doing fairly well with liability costs and workers' comp. Uh, our, our deposits will go up in part because our payrolls increased a little bit, but the overall industry on both of those is, uh, increasing, the costs are increasing dramatically. In fact, one of the, we have a, a pooled layer where we all, all the cities that are involved are, uh, sort of insuring each other. Self, and then there's, above us, there's another one that has made up of a whole bunch of pools called C J P M R, P M R A. And they're going to be, that's, so we, we self-insure up to the first half million, and it's a little bit more complicated, but roughly. They're actually talking about increasing that self-insured retention because they're having problems with double-digit increases on liability. So, the, the market's changing, we're doing pretty well right now, but we were told that we probably won't get refunds back, or what we call dividends back from, uh, score for a while as the market adjusts. Unless we continue to do a whole lot better than the rest of the industry, so, so it's good news, and then look at the future and the way that actuaries talk. And ours actuary actually tells jokes, but anyway, the way actuaries talk is they look towards the future, oh, he's great.
Really? I've never heard an actuary of this.
He's my very favorite actuary, of course, he's the only one I know, but nonetheless, he does a good job. Um, I was gonna talk about the pool meetings, but I understand the mayor will do that, so I will leave that, but I do have, I have some handouts, if you don't have.
I have some.
Okay.
I have handouts, you have handouts, I have handouts.
So, those are, those are the mayor's handouts, not my.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
No, I've got some over here.
Yeah, last night at the, uh, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, um, I was sort of letting you know what the, um, state setup and takedown costs were.
Oh.
However, the experts are in the management department that's sitting to my left, if you would like him to talk about that, uh, tonight, just briefly, we could, we could do that, if you would rather wait until. If you would like him to talk about that, uh, tonight, just briefly, we could, we could do that, if you would rather wait until the stage request comes back to you. Probably at either, I'm hoping that, that we can get it put together by the next meeting, but it depends a little bit on what the chamber gives us. So, your call as to whether Matt gets to talk on that.
If he wants to talk about it, I'd like to, if he has info he wants to give us, then great, if not, then you can do it the next meeting.
It's probably a good idea to do it all at once.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know, there is a man with more expertise than what I was struggling with last night.
Okay.
And, um.
We have an officer here, did you have a report?
I have no report, but I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay.
Oh, any questions?
Sergeant, Sergeant Department is ready.
He's ready.
But he has, he has instructions.
He just heard that the fire department's gonna be here, so he wanted to be here too.
He didn't wanna get left out.
Any questions?
We, actually, what, what we're doing is we are, one of the, the, uh, the things that we are doing is, um. At various times exposing not just the, the chief and lieutenant, but also the sergeants to what happens here at the council meetings, and then also be available to. Answer questions if you have them, so.
Excellent, thank you for being here, so I just have one question, how's everything going in the new police department?
Oh, it's amazing.
Is it?
I didn't, I took it for granted for fourteen years, now that I'm there, I can't believe I wasn't fighting hard for it myself.
Nice.
Uh, morale's way up.
So, Chief Bowles had vision, is that what you're saying?
He joked with him, asking if it was worth his mind over.
And he said, yes, of course, okay, that's great, and now you agree with him.
I understand, thanks.
That's great, anybody else have any questions? Thank you for being here tonight, it doesn't look like we have a lot of questions, um, no, no, nothing exciting going on in town right now, which is a good thing.
Yes.
There's a few calls, nothing serious.
A few calls, okay, nothing serious is good, okay, then, uh, I think that we're on then to, uh, council reports and council member Baird.
Mine's quick and easy, so I had a C two C meeting, uh, last Tuesday. First time I ever ate at Yak's in Dunsmere, oh my goodness, it was really exceptionally tasty, it's very good.
Ranked among the best in the country.
Is it really?
Yes.
A, a little out of my budget, but I can do it once every once in a while.
Didn't you tell me it was a twenty dollar burger?
It was, I wasn't gonna put it on the air though, but it was tasty.
It was worth every bite.
I can pick up pop bottles, it's okay.
On your walks.
Yeah, where's a bribe when you need one, you know, just kidding, um, but anyway. It's always a productive meeting, but, um, we do have some things going on regarding participating with the fair this year. Both Tula Lake and, uh, Siskiow Golden, so that's gonna be fun, don't be surprised if we call council members to ask if they'd like to sit in the booth. Um, and we invited Siskiow Revitalization Network to share the booth. Also because we're kind of, I, of like minds, so.
Good.
It makes sense, it can share some of, we can share some of the, uh, booth time, so we don't have to have as many volunteers. But on the, um, LAFCO, they are looking for a member at large. And, um.
So, a member from the community?
A member from the community, yes, and, uh, there's specifics about it, but if you have questions. Any, any volunteers? I thought not, but anyway, uh, also vacancy is on the cemetery board. Lori told me about it, uh, so if anyone's interested on that, they can go to the clerk's office.
The Shasta Valley Cemetery, so it, I think there's six cemeteries, I think, in that district that they cover. It's a big district.
Yes.
Big district.
And, let's see, this weekend, there is, uh, the Wild Turkey Federation Dinner, and I think that's all.
You must be doing the bar.
Yes.
A non-drinker.
Not bad, all the pretzels I can handle.
That's great, thank you, council member Shesky.
Okay, I went to the Waireka Fire Save Council meeting, uh, a week ago Tuesday. And the Stevens Funding Project, two hundred and forty acres, looks like that's gonna get started late summer in the fall. That's on some of the, I think, the private property on the outskirts of Waireka, so that's one thing that's going on.
For fire suppression.
Right, and they were talking about the, uh, countywide community wildfire protection plan, which had seen something that that's. Gotten approved, not correct, Steve, I mean, it was.
I, yeah, I'm not sure I know whether it's gotten approved or not, but it's gotten rid.
Yeah, it is done, but it, whether it's been approved by the state's a different story, yeah.
Right, and there's, there's actually a couple, well, anyway, yeah, I, it's, I haven't seen the report back from, or the approval back from the state, and we really would like to have.
And I believe that CalFire has something to do with that too, because Chief Anso mentioned it when we spoke with him.
There's, there's like three different reports that sound almost the same, and so one of them, uh. One of, the one we were talking about was actually the one that, um, was directed by the state after all the fires. There's also a hazard mitigation plan that Liz and I traded off going to meetings seven years ago. Seems like, it, it seems like it was more recent than that, cause it took a long time. Um, and that's the one that was just, uh, that's being updated, but it still needs, last we heard, approval by the state. And last I heard, they were actually going to be meeting with the state the next day, but I haven't heard anything, sorry.
Okay, uh, the next thing I have is, I've noticed that there's two new smoke vape shops in town now. And I think that is becoming a serious issue, because the FDA, Food and Drug Administration's calling it epidemic among young people. More than twenty percent of high school students use e-cigarettes, even though they're legal only for adults. I mean, that is huge, I don't know how it is in Waireka High School. But I think we've gotta look at some of the legislation that's coming out in other cities now. That, uh, number one, they were, uh, are banning flavored vape cartridges. Cause those are what the young people like, these flavored ones, like candy and cinnamon, different things like that. I think we need to do something like that, I think there should be an age limit for people even going in the shops. That they have to show an ID to go into these shops, cause those two shops, that's the only thing they sell is vaping stuff. And I, I think we really have to do something to try to, uh, address this epidemic. I mean, it's gonna turn a whole generation of youth into nicotine addicts, the way it's going, there's, it's being promoted, cause oh, this is. The way, it's not, and then there's all kinds of, um, e-cigarette uses come up with real severe problems with nicotine dependence. That people are getting seizures and things like that, because they, they don't regulate the dose of it. Like when a little vape thing will have more nicotine than a whole package of cigarettes, and they might do it all in a day or two. And, uh, it's really concentrated, so it's something I think we need to address with an ordinance.
I don't, you know, I look at that, the flavoring, I don't see so much of, cause that's kinda almost a discrimination thing for people that actually do use it for. You know, you gotta think of the people that are, that there's people out there, and I know personally, people that are using vaping to get off of nicotine. And it's like a transition thing, so flavor, you know, may, not necessarily, but the age limit, I, I tend to agree with you there, for sure.
I thought there was an age limit.
I don't know, Liz might know more about that.
I thought the age limit.
Talk to the attorney, I'm sure, about whether we can even regulate that, who's gonna check on it?
Yeah.
Doesn't Officer Potter have an opinion on this?
I don't know for sure, but I would imagine the age to illegally purchase and like possess vaping stuff is twenty-one, same as.
I would think so.
Twenty-one, okay, I thought it was eighteen, that's good.
Take out.
Oh, no, it's raised to cigarettes, twenty-one. Age twenty-one.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something I think should be adjusted to the ordinance that, you know, that they have to show an ID to go into these shops. If, but that's the only product that they have, it's like going into a bar or something like that, you gotta be twenty-one.
Right.
Your intention then is.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That's, that's good, we can, can we have staff look into that?
Right, so I mean, something that the city attorney should look at.
Right, yeah, if you, um, if you've seen something, cause I don't recall seeing a, uh, uh, the city, uh, or city ordinances on that. Doesn't mean they're not out there, obviously.
Well, I've seen, uh, one state, I think, has already passed a bill on that, I think that was Hawaii. I know San Francisco and some other cities have passed laws on that now too recently, yes.
So, maybe through the League of Cities, we could get a template.
Yeah, yeah, it just, on those kinda things, you look at somebody else that's already done all the legal work too.
But at this point, just for the guidelines of age restriction, correct, nothing else?
Well, that's, that's one of the things, is the age restriction, cause I mean, it's no way it should be going to high school students. And I mean, if somebody's buying it and giving it to high school students, that's wrong too, they should.
Like alcohol.
Yeah, that's not right either, yeah.
Just today, um, eight students from Medford were sent to the hospital.
Oh, that's right.
Very seriously ill from someone put in THD oil, beer, THD oil, and they all baved it together, they shared a pen.
Wow.
So, yeah, and there's, uh, it's by grocery, the one by grocery outlet, children are there every day.
Yeah, that, that's why I think there needs to be an age restriction on going into these shops, I've noticed that.
Yeah, we need to look into it to see if there's a, a state law or something that we could.
Signage in the window, winder?
Window.
Window.
Well, they're on the winter there.
So, the purchase age is twenty-one unless you're in the military and it's eighteen.
Oh, really, if you're in the military, you're an adult, evident, they can fight for the country.
That's right.
Okay, let's, uh, look into that.
Should have to show an ID to get into these shops, cause I'm sure a lot of people are not that age and they're going in and buying stuff.
Okay, so, direction to staff?
Yeah.
You wanna look into that?
Sure, yeah, we can look into it, I think probably before we actually, um, try to craft an ordinance, we would tell you what the state of.
Right, let's look at the state and look to see if there's a template, okay.
And I would be curious as to the consequences to the business owner regarding how many infractions before he has to close down. Is that too extreme?
I don't know.
Is that too extreme?
Well.
That's a lot.
If someone keeps violating the law many times, there should be a penalty.
Yeah.
But wouldn't this have to do with ADC?
Oh, yeah, they, they focus on alcohol and alcohol.
Yeah.
Alcohol.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, we can look at that.
Okay, thank you, anything else, okay, all right, council member Kay.
Um, just keep it short and sweet, we had a meeting last night with the chamber, um, I think it went really well. Um, we made some good progress on, on, uh, what the future needs to be with, with us and the relationship with the chamber. And how positive things are, and the, a couple new events that they're gonna try to put on this next year, in fact, real shortly. Um, one being Memorial Weekend, Car Show, and then another one being the Fourth of July Extravaganza. The fireworks and stuff, so, thought that was pretty cool, that they're gonna be doing a couple new events.
And Gold Rush Days.
And Gold Rush Days, of course, yes, that was in June, so that's good, um, and the one, they're talking about possibly doing. Um, the parade and Night of Lights is one event on the Thanksgiving, uh, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Like it historically was, was presented, so, I thought that was real good. Um, other than that, I got, we had some numbers that came out, some more on the homelessness too. Um, countywide was two hundred and forty-four, I had all the statistics and I just lost everything, so now I gotta figure out what the heck I just did. Anyways, I had all the little details I was gonna bring up and I just lost everything, but anyways, there was, um, some, uh, uh, interesting numbers. I'll bring back next time on that, um, and the other thing I was, I had a question.
Two hundred and forty-four was countywide.
Forty-four countywide, yeah.
And, and as I indicated before, they don't break it up.
No, they're, they're, they don't have, well, they do have it broke up in aspect, not if it's like cities, if they're, if you're talking about that, they do have it broken up. As in, the, the type of people, if they're unsheltered, sheltered, if they're, well, you know, female, male. Um, um, defer to, um, what do you wanna say, uh. Uh, yeah, one, and transgender too, they do that one too, of course, of the state age, they have different ethnic backgrounds. Um, military, if I'm a veteran, there's some veterans too, I think there was eight veterans, I wouldn't, not sure if that, I, like I said, I lost everything.
We kept some of them.
So, um, it was interesting, some of the numbers, um, another thing I have, a, a question, we, and actually Debbie brought this up to me. Um, we, this is.
I deny everything.
Changing, changing gears, um, we seen that, uh, planning commission okayed an Uber driver in Waireka?
No, not your, not your planning commission, maybe somebody else.
Didn't we see that?
You talked to me about it.
Are you talking to me?
We didn't, okay.
It was business license, not.
Business license, okay, thank you.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yes, yes, and there is one.
There is one, one Uber driver that has a business license here in the city.
Okay, is this something that we need to address, cause I know other cities have been addressing this quite a bit.
We talked, okay, so we talked about this, um, probably almost a year ago, when there was a rumor of an Uber driver.
Right.
Or a Lyft driver, and quite honestly, when, um, when that person disappeared. Uh, there's a lot of other things on the list, in fact, all of your lists, candidly, that, uh, we just, we thought were high priority.
Okay.
It's on the list, but it's not a very high one on the list.
Okay, so basically, we're just gonna, if we get complaints, then we'll address it, is that what you're, I mean, kinda sorta, I guess, maybe that's not the right verbiage, but.
I would say actually that it's, it's, it's more like, other cities have, uh, tried to regulate Uber and Lyft drivers. Have taken them, uh, to court and litigated, and it is a field that is still emerging. It might be more clarified than when we looked at it in, uh, two thousand eighteen, but it's not something that I would recommend that we. As a small city with one Uber driver, that we, um, uh, try to spend a lot of time regulating at this point. Now, there may be a point in the future where either it's clearer, and there's, you know, like a, a template that we all use, but right now, it's all over the map.
I, I guess my concern is, I've, because of this, I've seen a lot of other cities, there's been, um, you know, crimes that have been committed because of drivers. These guys are felons that are driving people around, even though it's supposed to be regulated, and you have a, a, maybe a pedophile driving somebody with a kid around, you know. So, I mean, there's little things that are kinda iffy that concern me, because it's like, eh, that's kinda weird that you don't, you don't have, uh, somebody that can.
I don't disagree.
oversee these things, it's like, kinda scary.
And so, if you really wanted us to work on that.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, it's just like, eh, it's weird. I like Uber, I've used Uber, don't get me wrong, it's not that it's a bad thing, it's just the whole, the whole thing with Uber and there's not much regulation. That's why the whole thing has blown up in all these other cities is because they're concerned about, yeah, cause they're concerned about.
Liz a question on this subject, so, uh, this poor one single Uber driver, did he have to comply with the same regulations? And requirements as the taxi businesses?
Sisters know, but I no longer do business licenses, right, I took that over.
Oh.
So, as Steve said, it's emerging and we haven't spent the effort on, there's, Willow did some preliminary research.
But the answer is no, they don't have to comply with the, as strict a regulation as taxis.
I think we're gonna hear about this from one particular.
Oh, yeah, I guarantee it.
Sure.
If they start to step on toes, but, I, yeah.
Right, okay, um, that is.
Can we make them, can we require them to do this? Is it up to us to require everybody to have a level playing field?
Do you want us to spend time finding that out, how it works, because it's.
You keep saying this kinda stuff, isn't it just right on the top of your head?
What I'm telling you is that, if you have looked, it doesn't take very long, put in cities, Uber, and some word that indicates concern, anger. Prohibit, something, it doesn't, it doesn't take very long to see all of the different things that cities have gone through. Because, you know, if you're in a, a city that has an airport, you have Uber and Lyft drivers, and that, and there, there are sometimes problems with that. And so, they've gone through a lot, it hasn't settled, to my knowledge, to where, you know, there's something that's, that's pretty global.
How about this?
There's a lot of lawsuits going on.
Yeah.
How about that, how about this, I'll have my legal analyst, my office manager.
Alice, yes.
Check this out and see if there's any big concerns and I'll, I'll make a report back to the city council.
That sounds great, thank you.
So, it doesn't, doesn't pry away from our city employees, I'll, I'll research it out.
Yeah, there's a number of lawsuits and stuff, she'll probably, she's, she's, yeah, she's a former legal aide, I think, so she can, great, good idea, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Um, okay, so, a lot of, a lot of stuff going on, but I did, you mentioned Siskiow Revital. Um, okay, so, a lot of, a lot of stuff going on, but I did, you mentioned Siskiwe revitalization. So, I wanted to let you know, I went to the Siskiwe Revitalization Network meeting on Monday, uh, at Fort George's. And wow, we had people from all over the county there, and we are, uh, organizing, we, since the last meeting, and we're alternating between Weed and Waireka for the meetings. This one was in Waireka, and, uh, and we had a number of people there from all over the county. So, at the last meeting, we asked each city, then there's ten cities that are involved. We asked each city to come up with an itinerary for a tourist, and all of the cities are in here, I can pass this around and take a look at it. Ours is, of course, Y, right before Z, so we're on the last page. But anyway, uh, we worked with the chamber.
That's awesome.
And we worked with the chamber and our supervisor, Lisa Nixon, and I, and we came up with this. Uh, we actually came up with like three different things, they only wanted one day. So, we gave them, uh, a one day where to go for breakfast, one morning activity, where to go for lunch, one alternative place for lunch, one afternoon activity on historic downtown Waireka. Uh, and then the museum, and one evening activity, and a place to go for dinner, and after dinner activity, and then a place to lunch. And so, each community was asked that, and they all came up with it, all the way to Happy Camp.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so, is this going to develop into a triple, or?
So, my, so the next thing I was gonna tell you is that, um, we are going to, uh, we kind of drew. And each of the cities is going to visit another city, and so we're going to, we're going to check them out. We are hosting Fort Jones, but we are visiting Weed.
Okay, cool.
So, and then we, we have a check sheet that we go through when we go to the city, you know, what's working, what isn't signage, and, you know, activities and things like that. So, I'll come back to you with that, and that's all going to be before the gathering of the whole group, which everybody is invited to, I just need to know if you plan to come. Uh, which is going to be on May fifteenth, and it's going to be at Bel Campo. And the Ford Family Foundation is helping to fund this.
Oh, cool.
It's, there's no city money going into it at all, it's, uh, volunteers, and then, uh, Bel Campo is paying for the food and.
I have one meeting the whole month and it's thin.
And that's thin, I know. It's going to be from three in the afternoon until seven thirty in the evening.
Wow.
Yeah, so, we're gonna set up at one, and then people will start arriving at three, and then we'll have it catered, and it should, should be really nice. Um, and so, uh, it's called, what we were working on is called My Town, My Three. And so, for each activity, was it easy to locate, you know, uh, a review, i- i- did you give it a review on TripAdvisor? What were the highlights of this activity for you? There's a number of things that we're gonna answer. And so, it's, it's a friendly, I mean, it's not overly critical, we, you know, it's not, you know, you're doing this wrong. It's more like this works, and this didn't work quite so well, and perhaps if you did this, it would work a little better. Anyway, it's to help each other, suggestions, and it's so good to see all ten cities working so well together.
That's.
So, that's, that's pretty cool, I'm really excited about that, and that's, by the way, been going on for years. Uh, and then, uh, you got the, uh, you got the thing on the pool, so there was a pool meeting last week that I wasn't able to go to, but thank you, Steve, for going. And this, for those of you that haven't seen the map, I do have a few maps left. This is the project that we're, uh, we're looking to apply.
Yeah.
You've seen it, okay, for the, um, for that eight million dollar grant that comes from the state of California for Parks and Rec. It's not just the pool, it's the whole Ringy Park, um, including the baseball field and the park. And so, we're hoping that people will come, we're having, uh, community meetings, um, on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, from six to seven. All these meetings are at the, um, the Waireka Community Center. Thursday, April twenty-fifth, from six to seven thirty, Monday, April twenty-ninth, from six to seven thirty, and Tuesday, April thirtieth, from six to seven thirty. And, uh, it says location, Ringy, Ringy Pool and Park, but, uh, oh, there's one meeting that's going to be at the park.
Yeah, Saturday, correct.
And that's on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, ten thirty to noon. If any of you are interested in going, I would encourage you to attend, because they're looking for input from the community. What is it that you see? What's your vision of how our community should operate? What kind of pool should we have, um, you know, what kind of facility for kids, you know, what, what should the park look like? Um, and, and the, um, the Baseball Association is working with us as well. So, uh, it's going really well, we've got some really great committed people, I think, you've been to the meetings, I think all of you have. So, uh, and there's six committees working on this.
Impressive.
It's, it is, and they're all volunteers.
So, I will just mention that one of the things that, um, at the, I think it's called the Engagement Committee, may ask for is. It's unlikely that any one council member would be able to go to each meeting, I'm certainly not going to each meeting. But they may ask to have a council member at different meetings, so.
That's what Catherine was telling me.
Right, so we, we may be, actually, the way that it's working to a great extent is that we have let the group, because of all the energy and engagement that they have. Run forward with a lot of things, so you probably won't hear about it from me, you'll probably get the invites from somebody else. But you never know, sometimes I can be in there. Anyway, I, I'm sorry, I interrupted you in the middle of your reporting.
Yes, it's a, it's a good thing, because I'm, oh, there it is, I lost part of my report, thank you for giving me a little time to find it.
No problem, as long as you don't throw things.
It was, it was hiding.
Before you change subjects from the pool.
Yes.
Because Rennie's on the Siskiwe thing, uh, I don't know if he told you that, uh, C two C is also applying for part of that grant for the viewing platform for Collier. But we have a line on two different grants for these kinda projects.
Okay.
So, if you'd like the other grant that we're gonna, um, consider, then I'll email that to you.
What's a viewing platform?
It goes over the river.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, they've been talking about that for years, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, but we're.
And since, and this is an amazing grant with zero match.
There's a time limit to apply.
There is, August, it has to be, this is the second phase. Um, they, they've already gone out for the first phase, this is the second phase of applications, and I think they'll have another phase next year. But there's a certain pot of money, and, and, you know, they're offering it especially to rural communities, they can't afford the Parks and Recs, so, it's a wonderful opportunity.
It's hard to get more poor than us.
Yeah, well, okay, um, I also wanted to let you know that I attended, um, the, uh, Policy Committee meeting last week for the League of California Cities. And, uh, Jan Arbuckle, the League President, um, who is from Grass Valley, a rural area, um, was, was there and welcomed everyone. And then, uh, the Governor's Budget Update was given by Dan Carrick and Michael Coleman, Dan is the lead lobbyist for the League of California Cities. So, he let us know, I mean, uh, that the budget is still a work in progress, because the May revision is coming out next month. So, we, we don't know what that's gonna look like with the Governor, but what I can tell you is the Governor attended the last board meeting in Grass Valley. He was invited by Jan, uh, our President, and he came with only one staff person, and he listened. And what he basically said was rural areas have been ignored, and I want to rectify that.
Wow.
And so, we had the opportunity to, I wasn't there, but they had the opportunity to talk to him about our Rural Cities Working Group. And so, he assigned a staff person to work with us.
Wow.
So, and, and they virtually said, what do you want? What do you need? So, that's what we're working on right now.
That's what.
And, uh, Steve's been helping with that too, because once you say, what do you want, all the cities, we have a really long list.
Yeah.
Of wants, and what we're, and the process of doing right now is trying to narrow that down to something that's manageable, that will be acceptable to the administration. One big lump of money.
Yeah, exactly, that's one thing, easy.
Anyway, so, so the, the major issues for the year were cap and trade, and the revenue source for that, he said there's going to be funding available. He said, don't overlook the opportunity for cap and trade funding, especially in rural areas like ours, where we can, you know, the, the carbon sequestration thing. Okay, and, um, the housing and land use is a huge, um, uh, issue for this administration and this Governor. So, there's going to be money available for, uh, for multi, what do you call it, used housing.
Are you talking about multifamily or mixed use, or both?
Mo- both, there's, there's funding available from him, now, that's, that's the carrot. So, the stick is that communities that don't comply and work toward reaching a goal of increasing housing, will, the stick is that they, they may withhold transportation funding. That's the big stick, and we need that transportation money, and we don't get as much as, you know, the bigger cities. So, we have to be careful, which is one of the reasons why the end of the month, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, I think, or twenty-third, twenty-fourth, is the legislative, um, days for the League of Cities. And so, it may be important to attend that, so I'm looking into going to that right now, just to make sure that we're on the carrot end of it and not the stick. Um, you know, we want, we want, we want to be fair, uh, but we also don't wanna be punished.
No, it's hard to be.
Yeah, so, anyway, so, we're looking on that, and they had, um, they had some things on cannabis and delivery. And I think you know that the, the legislature passed something that said that we have to have delivery, and the League of Cities is working on, um, on a bill that would take that away, you know, in rural areas like ours. So, they're, they're working on that, and I have the whole list of all the other bills that they're working on, rev and tax, transportation, telecommunications, public works. Um, the wildfires, environmental issues, that's, um, there's, um, the disaster preparation, there's funding in SB three-three-two. That's another, the, one that we wanna work to support, because there, there is money available for rural areas, you know, to, uh, to like, you know, make sure that our, our town is protected, like you were talking about. To make sure that the wildfire, so we don't have anything happen here like that. Um, and it was, uh, there was a lot going on, but I do have, I have the whole list of the housing bills of concern. The main one was, um, density bonuses, affordable housing, that would, um, allow a bonus of eighty percent. They're trying to, they're trying to change our zoning laws, is basically what the state legislature's trying to do, and zoning right now is a local control issue, so we have some concerns about those. And the Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen, that's SB thirty, uh, three-thirty, that would increase impact fees, and that's, uh, for ten years, and that's a concern.
Yes.
So, these are, these are the types of things that we've become aware of, and that we're, um, either working to support, or if it's bad for us, working to oppose. So, um, there, there is a sunset date on the cap, uh, the cap fee, uh, there's a cap fee on the rental housing discrimination. So, they're working on that, I don't really think that that's an issue up here, um, to cap rent, uh, uh, the rental fees. So, anyway, it was an item that they discussed quite a bit down there, but I have all the information if you'd like it. Also, I wanted to let you know that the, the LTC, the Local Transportation Commission, is meeting on Tuesday, I don't know, are you gonna be there?
Uh, no, I will not be.
It's a big agenda.
Not next Tuesday.
Pardon?
I will not be here next Tuesday.
You won't, Steve? Or maybe, uh, how about Cindy?
Cindy.
Cindy, get come, okay, uh, there's, uh, it's a, it's a very full agenda, complete with a, with a budget and an aviation plan, um, steering committee, transportation advisory council appointments. And right, right before it starts, there's going to be a, um, um, a public meeting to talk about the needs, the unmet needs. And I do know that Matt Chastis is going to be there to talk about the, remember last year, we had a special bus that picked up the hikers? So, they're gonna talk about funding that again too, so that's, that should be really good. Um, yesterday, the staff was very kind and to thank you, that I took them on a tour of the building, and we were looking at, if there's a corner of the, of the, the, uh, City Hall. That might be used by council members, I don't know about you, I've had requests from constituents to have private meetings, sometimes, uh, we don't have offices, and so sometimes if you have a meeting in a restaurant, it's a little too public for some people, and so there's been a request. We looked at every nook and cranny, and the only place that I found that we might be able to find a corner is in the back corner of the vault. And it's pretty full. So, we, uh, came over here, uh, because Renee actually had a suggestion, and it's actually a pretty good one. That table, if you push it over here, she's used it, because it makes a meeting area this big, but then we came up with the idea, actually Renee did, of, of having a table that goes flat. And then having the city seal on there, which would look really nice, um, and then, yeah, and, yeah, so we've talked to you about it, cause this is Dwayne's bailiwick. But then it would come up and legs would come down, and it would be a table, and when it's down, it's just the front of the dais. And so, we're looking at that, Steve's looking into that for building and cost and.
Yeah, there's actually been some other discussion too, about other ways of, of accomplishing a similar kinda thing that might be less expensive, but, um, but we, I, we can talk about that at some point.
Okay.
Actually, I was gonna talk to Dwayne and.
Gonna pick his brain?
Yeah, pick his, pick his brain and then also kinda see whether, anyway, there's.
Well, anyway, the point being is that this is the only place that's available for us to utilize for meeting space, for us. And then after we came up with the idea, staff was actually pretty excited about it, because we wouldn't be the only ones to use it.
That's right.
Staff also liked the idea of, of utilizing it, and so we.
It's our conference room too.
It, it, yeah, it would be like a conference room, I mean, it's a little bigger than that, but, uh, it would give us a place to meet and have a, um, so that we could have a professional location for meeting with our constituents.
It's something easy to engineer.
Okay. So, so I think that that's it, I do have a couple of proclamations to give this weekend, uh, one tomorrow is for the Women's Veterans that she serves. And then the other one is, I don't know how many of you know Jean Fasic, uh, she's a, a nurse practitioner, was in here in town, worked with Dr. Alley for years, and worked over at, um, hospice, and she's turning ninety. So, I have the honor of giving her a, a proclamation, and I guess congratulating her. Oh, that's not gonna show anytime soon, is it, as a surprise?
I can safely bet it will not show anytime soon.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I promise.
This is something that is happening this weekend?
Yeah.
Okay, we can make that happen.
Okay, yes, so that's for Saturday and Sunday, and that's, that's it, that's, that's my report, there's probably more.
We did forget something.
What did we forget?
We forget, forgot to thank Matt for getting the park host going.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, Matt, you have a report, we have a park host, the two of them.
I, I can speak to that if you'd like to do.
A wonderful.
I don't know about anybody else, but I've gotten compliments on the park host.
So, I'm.
So, wow.
I, I appreciate it, and, um, it, all, all of it needs to go back to Renee, Poisonton is our HR coordinator.
Oh, Renee, great.
Um, Renee and I have been working on this thing tirelessly for years, um, I'd forgotten how many years that I'd been involved in the park host. And the stars aligned and things just fell into place, um, so.
I heard you have competition.
We, we had, we had competition come out of nowhere.
Great.
And it works out, so as, as of right now, the program, um, and Ben has some input on this, we're, we're gonna run it as, as a four-month stint, instead of a six-month stint. And Ben, Ben thought that would be better for park hosts throughout the future to, the ones that wanna return, if we could get into a leapfrog situation with a couple, a couple couples, or, or whoever it is.
Yeah.
A few couples, or however that lays out over time, where the ones that were coming back actually got to rotate with seasons. So, six months, you would be stuck here for summer, and then somebody would be stuck for winter, and you could never break that. So, Ben said, how about we do four and we rotate, so if they're here over a number of years, we can catch all the seasons of the park.
Right.
And can travel in between if they like.
Right, and, and so currently, we have, uh, Carl Griner and Sandy in there, and, um, they're gonna be there for four months, they got in there last week. And it's gonna work out really great, you know, Carl being in, uh, with the chamber for many years and.
He was a council member.
On council and Mayor Protem for a while, he knows the city, that's exactly what we need in there right now, at this time of year for the tourists that come through. Uh, so, that's gonna work really well, and then the couple that's coming in behind them, um, he is a wildland firefighter with a client with National Forest, and they just moved in. And she has a side business that she runs, but they're currently working for Waaka Trail, Trailer Park as camp host. So, as it sets right now, it looks like we're gonna have a leapfrog situation with these two couples.
Oh, okay.
So, Carl and Sandy are in, they're plugged in, their wifi's on, as far as I know, everything's running, we, uh, installed a little privacy fence off the back. Fired up the power and everything, it's great, so.
So, they're actually happy campers?
So, sorry.
They're happy campers, but I can't stress enough the work that Renee Poisonton did to put this together.
Thank you, Renee.
It was a.
Wherever you are.
Yes.
Now, is, are they in charge of gates, locking gates or not?
We are having them lock the gates, um, there's a contract with Perfection Cleaning that we're letting that close out right now, Ben's working with Natalie, the owner of Perfection.
And that'll save a little bit.
And then Carl will take over.
That was one of the big kickers of the program at the very beginning, I've been back eight years.
That'll save.
Upper and lower?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we did wanna stress with this, that it's, while it will help having someone there, um, as a face of the city, they are not enforcement.
Right, right, absolutely.
They are, they are rules.
As long as he knows how to use a phone.
They're there to engage with the folks, let them know what's out there to do, let them know a little bit about the city and what to do, and when trouble, trouble hits, you call Sergeant Potter.
That's right, Sergeant Potter, yes.
Speed dial.
So, but no, it is, it's extras, uh, survives on the ground where our Parks guys have four hundred other acres to deal with, you know, other than just the park proper down there. So, it's, and, you know, Carl and Sandy been out there picking up cigarette butts and having long discussions with folks, and she dropped right into it, so.
Yes, she did.
We're extremely pleased with the way it's set right now, and I just cross my fingers it stays.
One, uh, with the, the shelter being stopped, the usage, uh, the Lower Green Horn Park, I'm sure has a lot less calls um, for conflicts going on now, I can pretty much guarantee.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
So, the shelter's closed?
Yeah, closed on April first.
It's been nice.
Yeah. Good, quieter.
Definitely not the hangout spot now, right that way.
Right.
Good, great, good news.
Yeah, the works is very happy.
Thank you and Renee for working on that, we appreciate it.
Awesome.
Yes, cool. Um, the only other thing that I have is I went to the, the Community Services Policy Committee, and they had a really interesting speaker on RHF, which is Retirement Housing Foundation. And there's all this good information in here and in here, and they even gave us a book, um, that is on rebuilding a dream that I'm going to leave for Steve in his office, if anybody's interested in looking at it. And it has all the Community Services Committee report too.
Oh wow.
I have to read, uh, Rob's first.
Yeah, before I get another book.
Yeah. You mean, you haven't gotten through that yet?
No.
I just got to the first part of it.
No, I keep falling asleep on it. Don't tell Rob.
Don't say that, you should not be saying.
If, uh, if you're during the meeting.
Yeah, before you say that, yeah. You might wanna, oops.
Well, we know, we do not have a closed session, I think that we're done, if anybody has anything else to say, otherwise, meeting has ended.